Good evening and welcome to our special broadcast on News Talk 1340 WSOY. Tonight, we are discussing a growing problem in our community and communities across our country. It's known by many names: K2, Spice, Potpourri, also countless brand names and chemical makeups. It's a synthetic material that mimics the effects of marijuana, cocaine, even methamphetamines. It's been proven to be extremely dangerous and in some cases even deadly. One would probably think enforcing this is along the lines of any drug, and you would be wrong. This product is hard to enforce, constantly evolving to avoid various efforts to ban it, and extremely difficult for law enforcement to stay ahead of. Unfortunately, it's not difficult to find. And even more disturbing, at this time, in some cases, it's 100% legal to buy and sell. It's marketed in a deceptively clever way, and it's profitable, and it's found its way into many of our stores and tobacco shops, and even worse, our schools. Our purpose tonight is to gather some of the most knowledgeable minds on this topic, discuss and educate the public on the problem, and hopefully reach some conclusions and solutions about the dangers of K2 to keep it from hurting our community and our children. It's here, folks, and it's not going away on its own. Joining us tonight is Shawn Simpson, DEA Task Force Officer, he's around. We've also got Glenn Haas, DEA Resident Agent in Charge of Springfield Division, Tom Schneider, Macon County Sheriff, Deputy Tim Hoffman of the Macon County Sheriff's Office, Dr. Maria Granzati, St. Mary's Chief Medical and Quality Officer and ER Physician, Jay Scott, the Macon County State's Attorney, and Ken Hatcher, Principal of Warrensburg-Latham High School. My name is Corey Allen from Newhoff Media, WSOY News. Thank you all for joining us in person, on the radio, and then later on in podcasts and streaming. Thank you to our panel for making yourselves available this busy holiday season to inform and educate about this growing concern for parents and really all citizens, and welcome and happy holidays to you all. I want to start by kind of defining what it is that we're talking about here, and everybody's going to have kind of different things that they bring to the forum. I want to start with Glenn Haas, he's the Resident Agent in Charge of the DEA as we spoke, and he's got a PowerPoint presentation, we're going to be very visual with this, but maybe we want to start by defining what we're talking about and making sure people are aware of what it is. Mr. Glenn Haas?
Thank you. The big thing, I appreciate the invitation, anytime there's any type of media attention, this sort of thing, the biggest thing is gives parents, educators, the absolute reason to talk to the children, although, and everyone in the community is using this from all different kinds of age groups, it seems like it's mostly targeted toward the youth. So, it's in the media, it's going to be broadcast, it gives the parents, educators, the reason to come up and say, hey, what have you heard about this drug? What have you heard about bath salts? What have you heard about K2 Spice? Because in the community with the kids, what they're hearing, it's a legal drug, it's something you can buy at the store, so it obviously isn't going to hurt you. I'll touch on it just real briefly as it goes through, as will the other presenters, it's far from the truth, it is a very destructive and dangerous drug. There's two different things, it's meth, cath, that own, I think this will work, okay, there's cannabinoids, and which is the synthetic marijuana. It's a synthetic, smokeable form, it's going to be on a leafy substance, basically, it's a chemical, it's sprayed on the drug, it's doused on the plant material and smoked. It's common names, it can have any kind of name that there's out there, but the common things that you'll see in the media are Spice and K2. The packaging, there's hundreds of different kinds of packaging, hundreds of different kinds of names, but those are the most common. It has a hallucinogen, it's got euphoric properties, but it's most commonly called a synthetic marijuana. The second is the cathinones, which is most commonly referred to as the bath salts, you will hear it referred to as plant food, or research chemical. It is a stimulant, it still has hallucinogenic properties, it is sometimes referred to compared to cocaine, but it's also compared to methamphetamine, can also be compared to MDMA ecstasy. So, there's hallucinations, it's going to speed up the heart rate, it's, so it's kind of a combination of everything into one. A lot of times, especially with the public, you'll hear, okay, well, there's plant food and bath salts, and we just buy those in the store, you know, what's the difference? The bath salts and the plant food, that sort of thing that we're talking about today is not what you buy in the store, okay? The difference is, you buy plant food to put on your plants, you're talking $5, $12 for 1.5 pounds, where what they're selling bath salts in the store is $25 for a quarter of a gram. Now, if you, how much is a quarter of a gram? If you look what is on the sugar packet that's on your, to put in your tea at the restaurant, that's about a gram of substance. So, what they're selling this for is a quarter of that for about 25, and in some places in the area, we are seeing it's up to $50 for that 25 grams, or for a point, a quarter of a gram. The bath salts, again, it's the same stuff that they're selling, there's no difference, you know, the stuff you buy at Bath &amp; Beyond, those are legitimate, those are what people that you use, that is what a bath salt is. You'll see that $10 to $15 per pound. The bath salts that are being used for illegal purposes, for getting high, you know, it's going for anywhere from $50 to $100, up to 2.5 to 3.5 grams. So, it's a very, very, if you would open up a package of that for a bath salt, it's, you're not going to be able to pour it into your bath to see anything at all, it's a minute amount that you got, but it doesn't, when you're ingesting it, trying to get, be under the influence, I mean, it's plain. We'll go back to the bath salts, I'll touch on that real briefly again, it's a cathinone, it's a synthetic drug. It can be packaged many different ways, typically what you find in the stores is plastic or cellophane wrapped things, you will see some up top there, some small little glass cylinders, again, it's very small amounts in the containers. Where the, what they are, there's many different kind of makeups, there's, with bath salts, there's probably well over 100 different substances, different chemical makeups, they're all similar in some way with the different, same effects. The first three, PB, methedron, and methone, those are all, those have been controlled now, the fourth one is an analog, which I'll touch base in a little bit. The typical names, the most common names are sold under Ivory Wave, then a La Sky, Ocean Wave, and again, there's many, many other names. We can label, list 100 different names that they're selling it under today, tomorrow there'll be 100 different, 100 more, so can't really get stuck on what the brand name that they're selling on the street because it really doesn't matter. And the other thing with both these, both K2 Spice and with bath salts, is you don't know what you're getting. You may buy tomorrow, today we may buy Ivory Wave and have it tested at the lab, and it says it is this substance. Tomorrow, we'll buy the same thing from a different store, and there'd be a totally different substance in it. So, what it is packaged as means nothing, because it could be packaged and made at one place in California, and then the package that you're buying over here is packaged and made someplace in central Illinois, so it just depends on who's preparing it and how it's packaged. The effects, again, it's similar to methamphetamine, similar to cocaine, and there are hallucinogenic effects. Typically, the bath salts, although it can be smoked, it's normally is going to be snorted such as like cocaine. It has been placed, the top three there, methadone, MDPV, and methylone, those are controlled as of October 21st federally, they are a Schedule I drug, which means there is absolutely no legitimate use for those, for that substance. Okay, synthetic cannabinoids, Spice, K2 mix, again, it's the same thing as bath salts, there's 100 different names out there, it just depends on how it's packaged, how it's marketed. There's all kinds of different packagings, but it's, again, it's the same, it's in cellophane containers, aluminum foil, but you'll also see the plastic and the glass things, and they're, they get small amounts, anywhere from a gram to five grams in a package. Both of these drugs, but more specifically the synthetic cannabinoids, like with anything, it was originally made for legitimate purposes, and then it's done at research facilities, it's to try and treat sicknesses, illnesses, and then they find, you know what, it has an effect on the body, let's try and find a little legitimate use for it. Again, like I touched on, it's sold in small packaging, you'll see on almost all of these, it'll be marked on there, and it's a way to try and avoid, and it'll, not for human consumption. I will tell you though, when we're out there buying it, when we're doing different cases on it, when we go and buy it, it's, especially some of them, they'll sell you a pipe along with it, so if it's not for human consumption, why are you selling a pipe? But it's, I'll touch on base, touch base with that a little bit more, and as I go. It's just on a leafy substance, it can be, I'll go in a little bit more of what they're putting on, but any kind of dried, leafy substance is what they're pouring it on. Again, it comes in the same packaging. The original, there are over 450 synthetic drug, synthetic cannabinoids out there. Again, it was originally created by John W. Huffman, he's a Clemson Research Professor. Again, it was introduced, and he was trying to find a cure and help to go on multiple sclerosis, AIDS, chemotherapy. He developed, I believe, about 100, 150 of them, but there are other chemists and scientists that have dealt, but a quote from him that I like to say, and it's straight out of the person who made the drug, "It bothers me that people are so stupid to use this stuff. It is not made, it was never made to ingest the way that people are ingesting it today." Some of the law enforcement concerns, currently there aren't the drug tests to know what people are taking, so if you have a person who's out on parole, out on probation, a person with substance abuse problems, they're smoking this, they're ingesting this, right now, currently the test, although there's a way to test it, it doesn't, it defeats the typical probation law enforcement test. There's no way to also identify for first responders as far as DUIs and whatnot, the general test that law enforcement will use doesn't identify that this person's under the influence of these substances. There's also the issue of canines, typically don't alert on it, and then there's the problems they have in the laboratories when we're sending in it for the, for the chemist, for court to identify what it is, they have to have the specific samples and specific standards to compare it to, which they don't all have. The big thing, and again, like I touched on with the educators and the parents, it's considered illegal high, where with any of the drug laws, with any of the laws, you're never going to create a law that's going to stop people from doing anything. You're not going to create drug laws that make automatically, okay, no one's ever going to use drugs again because it's illegal. I think everybody knows that that's not going to happen. The problem is, there is a large portion of the community that don't use drugs specifically because they are illegal. So, that's the ones that we have the problem with, because there are kids, there are adults who typically would not try or use a drug because it's illegal. Now, it's being marketed, it's a legal substance, so people that wouldn't normally typically do it, well, you know what, maybe I want to know what this feels like. This is legal, it can't hurt me. Again, it's to the contrary, it's a very dangerous drug. Again, you could see on the packaging here, it's not for human consumption over to the right, on the front of the package on this one, it's U.S. Lab Certified, and it's legal, so that's what they're pushing for. The, for the cannabinoids, five specific ones, the most common five have been scheduled as of March 1st of this year, they are scheduled, so federally they are illegal. There is pending legislation accompanying designer drugs, because again, there are, with synthetic cannabinoids just alone, there are over 450 out there, it's just going to continue to be more, so they're trying to have a broader, over general law that will cover those. Again, it's the Controlled Substances Analog Enforcement Act. The manufacturer of it, well, you'll see typically, and what primarily, majority of the drugs, especially with cannabinoids, are being manufactured over in China. So, wholesaler in the U.S. will order it, raw materials will be shipped back, the manufacturer or the wholesaler in the U.S. will dilute it, get it on the smokeable form of the substance, and then sell it. The importable, it's all water soluble, typically comes in a powder form, they'll dilute it with acetone, and it's typically the Damiana plant, which is primarily produced and grown in South America, it is grown and has some type of medicinal legitimate purposes, it's primarily, again, out of South America, there are some other places. It's just a plant, it's a leafy plant material that they'll dry, they'll dilute it, they pour it on there, spray it on there, mix it in there, let it dry, and then put it in the packages, and it's ready to smoke or ingest. That's a picture of it, typically what you're going to see, again, it looks like tobacco, and then, and you could find it that way, and then some smoke shops. The prices, and this is why it's being sold, and what it is, it's the profit margin. A kilogram of synthetic cannabinoid you're going to buy is going to make or produce about 30 to 40 kilograms of finished smokeable product. If you put, if you take that down and win the three gram packages, it's 10,000 packages you're going to make, and they're sold anywhere from $10 to $20 for each single package, and we, as of recently, you're seeing some stores that are selling for up to $50 a package. So, it's a considerable, considerable profit margin. Is it here, and where you buy it, online retailers, head shops, smoke shops, convenience stores, just about anywhere has it, it's a legitimate product, or they're selling it as a legitimate product, you can get it. Federally, again, it is, there are the five banned subjects on cannabinoids and methan, or no, excuse me, as far as the bath salts. In that, there is the analog law, which is federal, so even though these particular substances are banned, there may be a different chemical makeup of the others, so that we can combat that with the analog law. The problem with the analog law is a little trickier, we have to get a chemist into the courtroom to show, yes, it is chemically substantially similar to one of the banned substances. The second prong is, a pharmacologist, does this have the same effect on the body as one of the banned substances has? And then the third is, is it used for illegal purposes? And that's where law enforcement comes in, it's being sold as a smokeable, hey, he told me how, that this makes you feel better than this drug, this smokeable form, or here's a pipe, this is how you use it, so that's the third prong that we got. So, that's how we're combating it federally for as far as the analog law. And then, again, it's not just a U.S. problem, just like every drug that's out there, it's, it started, a lot of it has started over Europe, it's been controlled over there, it's a big problem. The challenges are the analogs, because you need the extra law enforcement, you need the pharmacologist, you need the chemist, and then the attorneys to be up to date on the laws and how to prosecute it. It is a Schedule I drug, so there is no legitimate purposes, and the big thing, again, it's being sold, hey, this is not for human consumption, it won't hurt you, wink and a nod, it's being sold over the counter, and unfortunately, you're seeing more of it, especially with the youth, kids are dying, they're being, having paranoia, suicides, a vast number of car accidents involving this, so, I mean, the youth is dying from this stuff, it's not a simple harmless drug, it is very dangerous. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but otherwise, we'll continue on.
Yeah, we'll open it up to questions, we will open it up to questions eventually as we continue on here, I know there probably are going to be some, and we've got a lot more information to get to. I want to kind of defer to Macon County Sheriff Tom Schneider and Deputy Tim Hoffman, you guys are, you know, on the beat doing this in the community, it's in Macon County, it's sold in Macon County, it's reached our schools, tell us a little bit about what you guys have seen.
I'll start out. Basically, can you hear me, or is it basically voice?
I think we're good.
Okay. What we're dealing with right now here locally, and I know the Chief Walker, of course, has been instrumental in reference, working with this, on this, we've heard about this for over a year now, and once it started getting in the schools, we started getting feedback, and Tim has been the individual that's been a catalyst for this, bringing information back from the schools, saying these are the problems that these kids are having. Once he started educating us, of course, this was something new to us, we started working, of course, on trying to be able to do something about it, and one of them was, of course, through the public relations aspect of it, and that's why we're here today. Tim, I want to defer to you for a little bit to give some information about the school aspect, you can come across.
Well, as he was saying, we first noticed these products being sold here in Macon County at the start of this year, and through the summer, I guess, some of our kids have been experimenting with it, and then at the start of this school year, it's pretty much when we, it's been almost a daily occurrence that we're talking about it, talking with young people, and we're seeing it a lot more in the schools, when we're doing vehicle searches or locker searches, or just to a kid smoking it in the bathroom, we've seen a lot of it. And some of our students have even gone to the hospital for symptoms of vomiting, and it was believed that they had appendicitis because the student was not forthcoming on the fact that he had smoked these, this product, and it was making him extremely ill, and then we've had some students who have, who need to seek rehab and things like that, so we're definitely seeing it a lot more after this past summer, and they're experimenting and using it more.
Okay, and that's, that's definitely something that everybody needs to know, that it is right here in our community. That kind of shifts us over to Dr. Granzati, I know that you're going to give us the health aspect of this. So, the effects are similar to those in marijuana, what are the differences, and how are people using this, and what are you seeing?
Well, the K2, as, we had such a nice presentation, thank you for that, that's knowledgeable for everyone. The K2 is a synthetic cannabinoid, and it's, what they're going, what people are going after is the hallucinogenic effect of it, so they want to get that quote unquote "high" from that substance. Lots of times, what comes along with that high is you can have paranoia, you can have increased anxiety, you can have panic attack, you can have confusion, you can have a real behavioral problem with that, but it doesn't just stop there. The potency of these drugs, they bind to receptors so much more strongly than regular, if you can call it, regular marijuana, but they bind to the receptors that much more strongly, so the effects can be that much more intense, and the addictive potential is very high with these, it's reported to be very high. As far as the bath salts, again, there's no one drug wonder to reverse the effects of either one of these. The bath salts is more of a stimulant effect, it's very similar to like a cocaine or like an ecstasy, again, it's dealing with neuroreceptors and neurotransmitters in your body, throughout your body. There's no one medication, one antidote for either one of these, so lots of times, it's supportive therapy for either one, whether it's the anxiety, whether it's the increased heart rate, it could be the high blood pressure, again, the confusion. There have been reports of seizures, and actually in our emergency room here, there have been reported patients that have come in with seizures secondary to the bath salts and the K2.
And there's a tremendous amount of chemicals in these drugs, that we don't even know exactly what they are, as Mr. Haas presented in his presentation, you know, it could be mixed with anything, and they're constantly changing it, which makes it impossible for treatment to stay on top of it, right?
And what, if you think about it, the presentation, if you can relate to the beautiful presentation that we had, there's no, this bag is not going to be like this bag, it's not going to be like this bag, so you may not know what you're getting or what you've ingested, number one, and then number two, everybody's going to act differently to those different concentrations of medications. So, it's a very, it's a very dangerous aspect for both.
Is it a growing problem? Have you seen more and more people?
Reportedly, we're seeing more and more, they talk about, there's different statistics as far as calls to poison control centers, they talk about a tenfold increase between 2010 and 2011 with calls to the U.S. Poison Control Centers, and that's just the U.S.
Yeah, it's definitely getting worse, and when you're calling poison control over a drug, obviously, it's a little bit different than something natural, we really don't know what's in this stuff.
Exactly.
Okay. Moving on just a little bit, I want to talk about enforcement of this a little bit, is there anything else that I, that we need to discuss as far as?
No, I think there's a lot of information here, but like I said, the biggest points here is it's an unknown, it's not for human consumption, as they're trying to purport it is, that it's legal supposedly, but what's not, what's not known is the long-term effects, the addictive potential for every patient that ingests either one, and there's also an affiliation with if you're using, for instance, the K2 or the Spice or the bath salts, the chances that you have used other drugs in the past, there's a connection there, you've probably used other drugs in the past, but again, as was alluded to, if you want to try to use the quote unquote "legal," although we really know it's not legal, they may have this avenue, that's that new population.
Yeah, there's a way to get around it too, and if that's, if that's the case, that's why people are doing this, which is even scarier yet. We do have some examples for those of you present back on the table, if you want to know what it looks like. I'm going to move on a little bit to some of the enforcement, and how we can enforce this, and why it's so difficult to enforce, I'm going to defer to Jay Scott, Macon County State's Attorney. Tell me a little bit about enforcement, and why we're having such a hard time staying on top of this.
Well, up until January 1st of this year, all of these substances were legal. The legislature passed two different chemicals, outlawed them, immediately, we started seeing on arrests that these chemicals were coming back, they were not the two chemicals, so all they did was change the chemicals. Then in July, we had another law coming in effect, which outlawed several more different chemicals, we've since, there's several more that have been added, that are going to be outlawed effective January 1st, which deal, and they set out some of these compounds, and then basically what the law says, if you change them a little bit, it's still going to be illegal. So, it has been difficult, and there is no field test out on the streets for the officers that they typically would have with cannabis or cocaine or heroin, they don't have that. So, we don't lock people up, we have to wait until it goes to the lab and comes back to see if it is in fact an illegal substance. So, it is a, it's a new frontier with, as opposed to all the other drugs we deal with, because it is changing all the time.
Tell me a little bit about the aspect of local retailers, and Deputy Hoffman, I feel to say something on this too, I mean, it's being sold here in Macon County, we know the places where it's at, at least some of them, and, you know, who is selling these, what types of stores, and is there any ramifications for them at all right now?
Some of the stores that we're seeing them is your convenience stores, slash gas stations, your smoke shops, and just small, I mean, convenience stores is where we're selling it, either over the counter, just where it's being displayed behind a counter or on the counter, if it's taped up, or some places you even have to go to and you have to ask it specifically for that product, and that's where they reach underneath the counter, and that's where they present it to you, and there's some places where you have to ask for potpourri, they kind of mix the word potpourri and pot together, and that's just one of the ways that you would get it, and then they would reach under the counter and they would sell to you.
Yeah, and it blows my mind, that part of it I find very interesting, when you have to ask for something specific, I would refer back to you, Mr. Bean, how is that any different than a drug dealer?
It is a drug dealer, in fact, the penalties for this, while they're not as stiff as cocaine and heroin, if you possess these drugs with the intent to deliver, you're talking about a Class II or a Class I felony, and so that's up to 15 years in prison potentially is the maximum penalty for this. The other odd thing is, when this first came out, the synthetic cannabis or the legal cannabis everybody thought it was, now that it's a Schedule I controlled substance, it's a felony to possess any amount, and these small amounts, if you actually had cannabis, it's only a misdemeanor. So, there's some very serious penalties here potentially, both for the people using it and the people selling.
And the way of penalties, who takes the fall for sale of these products? Do you go to the owner, do you go above the owner, the owner of the business, or just the retailer, like in the case of alcohol?
Well, typically, I mean, any one of them could be prosecuted for, you could go after the store owner, you go after the corporation that's profiting from it, or you could go after the clerk that's selling.
Okay, and as the products evolve, that becomes more and more difficult, what's the process of organizing a ban on these products? I mean, it's kind of step-by-step process, but will it be up to individual committees, cities, counties, states, I mean, how far is this going to go?
Well, I think we, obviously, the state is trying to react, it's very difficult when you're talking about chemicals that just keep changing, but I think the public needs to put some pressure on these places, these stores, and whatever, through the media, through boycotts, whatever, until we get a definitive law that outlaws all of these, that we can effectively prosecute, we need to put some pressure on these stores and have them quit selling this stuff. And the problem is, it is very profitable, and that's why anybody sells any kind of a drug, the profit margin with these substances is amazing, and they don't want to give that up.
Absolutely, I mean, in this economy especially, nobody wants to lose their job when they're told to sell it, you know, or something like that. So, if the sale of these products is banned, does it push them to be sold illegally, and do we have a problem there, maybe at a higher cost, or does it increase the demand? I mean, do you see any of that?
No, I don't think it increases the demand, you have to, you have, number one, get an effective law to outlaw all of these substances, so that we can prosecute these people, and keep them at least from store shelves where any kid can walk in and purchase it and think it's something legal.
So, we've heard a little bit about some of the chemicals that are banned, and when you say the names of chemicals, most of us probably don't recognize what they are necessarily, and we don't, maybe don't know what they are, so what would individuals face if caught using these products? Does it depend on, I mean, are we, are we in a situation where you catch somebody with something like this, and it has the chemical that's banned, or it doesn't have the chemical that's banned? I mean, we're not staying on top of it very well, we've already established that, but what are the penalties for using it, selling them now?
Well, if you possess the, any of these substances, less than 200 grams is a Class IV felony, and if you have more than 200 grams, that's a Class I felony, and that carries a four to 15-year sentence in prison, is a maximum penalty. If you're, if you sell it or you possess it with the intent to sell it, like you have it at the store and you're intending to sell it, anything under 50 grams is a Class III felony, 50 to 200 grams is a Class I felony, and if you have over 200 grams, that's a Class X felony, which is, there's no probation on Class X felony, it's a mandatory six years to 30 years in prison.
Okay, and that being said, we've been hearing that, from a lot of different news outlets and things like that, that this is 100% legal, so it's not 100% legal, there are some of them that are banned and some of them that are, how, is it tested?
I'm sorry?
Is it tested when somebody is, you know, do we run it to a lab, is that how that works?
When the substances are seized, they go to the Illinois State Police Crime Lab in Springfield, they do test them, if they come back and it is one of the banned substances, then we prosecute people for those offenses, if it's not one of the banned substances, there's nothing we can do.
Okay, and so they're constantly going to evolve, and it's going to Okay, and so they're constantly going to evolve and it's going to continue to be a problem. I want to move on to Ken Hatcher. He is the principal of Warrensburg Latham High School. And I know you're very interested in this topic. You've probably had some problems in your school. It is in the schools now. Tell me a little bit about your perspective on, on how we, what we need to do.
Well, I think what you got to realize is that we're taking a group of individuals and teenagers who already think that things don't happen to them. You're putting them into a store and allowing them to purchase this stuff and take it out and experiment with it. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is things are happening to them. Reports of students with increased and rapid heart rates. Kids getting in trouble because they're getting caught with the substance in schools. We're seeing a lot of that. I hear about that from principals around the area and what they're dealing with, the situation. I think the only thing we can do right now is continue to do things like this. We've got to keep informing. Amy Madigan had a statewide summit on this. It's great that we're doing a Macon County summit on this. We've had Officer Hoffman in. He's put a letter in our newsletter to get out to parents. We've just got to keep the lines of communications open and you've got to keep talking to your students and letting them know, hey, this is not okay. This is not something that should be done.
At what point in your school, and if you, I know you can't speak on behalf of others, but hey, what, do teachers know what this looks like now? Are they, are they seeing it? Do they know what they're looking for, the packages? I mean, a lot of people don't know even what it looks like and that's why we're informing this, too. But in your school and in others, in your opinion, are we all informed enough to be able to stop this in the schools?
We're getting there. When we came back, we sent two representatives to the statewide summit. They came back with a lot of materials to pass out to teachers so that they can see exactly what these things look like. We're trying to stay on top of it the best that we can and, you know, it's an ongoing problem. And as you're hearing up here, we're a small school and we're having our problems dealing with it, but the state, the federal government, everyone's having their problems dealing with it. So I think the only thing we can do is keep informing everybody about the dangers and hope that the message gets crossed.
We're seeing some nationwide reports that this is becoming a growing problem with athletes. And Dr. Granzati, you might be the best person to ask this, or anybody else that wants to chime in. We can keep this open. I'm perfectly fine with that. But testing, how does it come up?
Well, again, as was explained, the standard drug testing, it doesn't surface on the standard drug testing. You have to know exactly what you're looking for and be lucky enough to know what you're looking for, to be able to get the right test to pick it up. And as was explained, then tomorrow, they'll change that formulation. So it's a little bit different compound, so it's that much harder to pick up.
And the testing is completely different, so you're going to find something else each time with somebody else that uses it. Is that a growing problem with athletes in your school? Or have you heard more and more about this with athletes using it?
I don't know so much as with athletes as just with teenagers in general. I mean, you could have a teenager who maybe earlier in their life had had a problem with marijuana. They may have a parent that's on top of them, testing for marijuana, thinking that they're doing all the right things to keep their child safe. And they've switched now to using K2 and it does not get picked up in a normal marijuana test.
And there's probably a lot of people that are listening to this right now and people in present here that are thinking, what can I do? But I guess the overall question is, what needs to happen to get these products away from our children? And anybody can answer that if they have something to say on it.
Part of it, I think, you know, young people, the community, you know, parents relate this to their kids, but as long as that self-confidence, that self-assurance, these kids have a lot of decision-making ability and capability. Some of the decisions are good and some of the decisions are bad. But I think as long as we keep engendering that focus with, you know what, you're going to be making decisions the rest of your life and this is the reason to make the right decisions and not the wrong decisions. I think the more we foster that, that's just a personal opinion of mine, but I think that that gives them that much more strength to deal with several issues.
Okay, anybody else? Sheriff Snyder, I'll ask you. What should parents do to make sure their kids understand the dangers and what should they look for?
You know, you got to start in schools. And I think a lot of it has been, we've already done it at least one conference. And I think if we start educating the people, we as law enforcement administrators, we have identified this as a problem. We've educated our officers on how to handle it. We don't just have this issue with just with the kids buying it. We're also having an issue, of course, with the driving under the influence, of course, with what they call intoxicated compounds, which we've had several arrests under that, too. So we are actually combating them a couple of different ways. And I think that it's important to note that we'll continue to do those aspects of enforcement. But we're looking, of course, to our legislators to be able to assist us and hopefully, come January, we'll be able to do that. DEA has been working very close with us. We've utilized DEA on a lot of other cases, usually it's bigger narcotics-type cases. But here on this, right here, they identified it as a problem. They're working with the local law enforcement to try to be able to do the things that are necessary for us to try to curtail this activity. Most important thing is to educate the public. We're here today to educate as many people as we can, get the message out, and we'll continue to try to do whatever we can.
And Principal Hatcher, you touched on this a little bit, but how can teachers and administrators keep tabs of these products coming in and out of the schools? What's being done and do we need to increase those efforts?
Well, there's not a lot you can do on, on the issue of having it come in and out of the school, other than to keep your eyes open, keep talking to kids, make sure that they understand the dangers that they're getting themselves into. It's an ongoing problem. I think one thing that everybody out there can do, if you walk in somewhere and you see them selling it, walk out. You know, as a citizen, you always have that right. And I think that's a statement we got to start making in some of these places.
Absolutely. And kind of expanding on that a little bit, maybe Mr. Bean, you might be the best one. How can concerned parents or citizens or anybody, is there anything anybody can do to pressure these retailers to pull it off their shelves, to quit selling it?
I think the same thing. And if it comes down to have to boycott or have to put it out publicly, here's the stores that are selling this stuff. We're asking you not to patronize them. It's right. We don't have to keep giving them more money.
That definitely helps. When you, when you take away the money, the store's closed, so that's pretty much one thing to do. Deputy Hoffman, as a retailer, from what you understand, they're called potpourri, they're called bath salts. Nobody's selling these with an intended purpose other than to get high, right? These retailers know what they're selling.
They know what they're selling. And if they don't, then they need to go through their products and start learning a little bit more what's on their counters. But, you know, you have a soda bottle, you know what's in there. You have a bag of chips, you know what's in there. They know what's being sold over the counter.
And it's extremely profitable. We already covered that. So, you know, as a retailer, be pretty responsible to pressure other retailers. I mean, not every convenience store. You can't walk into Kroger and get this, right? There are certain kinds of shops and certain kind of people who are selling this. And is it becoming more widespread or are we starting to get a handle on it? Anybody that wants to answer that can certainly do it.
I want to tell you about the demand. I actually spoke with an attendant that was telling me about how they had an individual from down in St. Louis call up, ask if they had bath salts available. They, of course, told them they had a good majority and quantity of it. They drove from St. Louis up here to buy them out. And so if you have that type of demand and they're taking it back to different areas like that, you can tell unfortunately that there is a big problem. And when the money's there, they're going to continue to sell it the manner that they are. So we know that it's a problem. We're going to continue to try to monitor and do what we can.
Absolutely. And the products are in different packaging, so like I said, we can, you can look at some examples here if you're present here at St. Mary's for the town hall meeting tonight. I've had some reports that parents would see it and they didn't even know what it was. They think it's a package of fruit snacks or I've heard Pop Rocks because of the packaging. And there is a packaging, you can see it here if you're present. It has Scooby Doo on it. And we have no doubt that who that's marketed towards, right? Anybody wants to chime in on how these products?
Scooby Snacks, Mad Hatter, Matrix, go down the list. And it just, very catching, captivating-type pictures on it. But yeah, and clearly, the thing I notice most about them is that it doesn't say who manufactures them. Not anywhere on there, nothing about it other than not for human consumption.
Now, it's obvious that the effects of this, we heard some of that from Dr. Granzati, and I thank you for that. And it certainly is good to know what this stuff does to you. There's been some DUI cases. Tell us a little bit about, you know, under the effects of this stuff, how dangerous you can be as a person.
You know, I made contact on a traffic stop one time with four kids. All four of the kids' eyes were glazed over. And as soon as I made contact with them, I asked them, have you been smoking anything? First thing I thought was cannabis. Initially, their indication was no, we hadn't. Eventually, they indicated that they had been smoking K2 and we found a pack of it in there. So just first glance, observation, mannerisms, within five minutes of contact, you can tell that they were under the influence of something. And then these kids were 16, 17, 18 years of age.
Yeah, so they're getting their hands on it somehow. And there's also many ways to hide it, as we have some examples back there of that, too, in a Coke can. I know there's several examples back there. I looked at them earlier and didn't, you know, but there's ways to hide it, just like there is anything else. People put their pot in something and you see some of that, too, where they're hiding it. I mean, Deputy Hoffman, you might, you've seen some of this.
Yeah, I mean, we have a fake rock that you can open up and you can put your key, you're supposed to put your keys in, but easily you can hide anything, drug paraphernalia, anything inside that. You have, we have candles that you can unscrew the bottom and hide things in. There's also outlets that you can get, put in your wall and you just pull it out. It could be like a safe. So there's a lot of different, different ways.
What's sad, Corey, is that they're not hiding it from law enforcement as much as they're hiding it from their parents.
Absolutely. Yeah. And speaking of that, we'll open it up just a little bit. I want to make sure that if anybody has questions about this, there's a lot to know. And even in this hour that we're doing this broadcast, we're just scratching the surface of this stuff. You're going to hear more and more about it. If anybody has any questions whatsoever, I'd like to come around and, you know, make sure that we get those answered for you while you have the opportunity to do so. Yes, ma'am?
My first question is, does this stuff, does it have the smell of pot?
No, it does not. And there's samples that Decatur has brought in. And when you get near those products, I would recommend wafting the smell to you, not taking a big sniff, because it might give you headaches and things like that. But it just wafts the smell up to you. And they have an aromatic kind of smell to them. There's even, take a look, some of them have blossoms in them, like flower blossoms in them and things like that. But no, it does not smell anything like cannabis.
Well, yeah, you would hope if something's marketed as potpourri, it would smell good. I mean, you would hope.
Yes.
A recent search warrant that we did here in central Illinois, I don't want to get into too many specifics, but they're flavoring it. So it's an incense flavor, but you may have a strawberry flavor, you may have, you know, a vanilla flavor. But they're flavoring, you know, it's kind of like potpourri. So they're adding it in the actual, and I say it's a manufacturing, it's a laboratory, but basically what it was, was an apartment. And they had, you know, the wet stuff over here and the dry stuff over here and the bags over here. That was the lab. So there was no expertise, no chemist involved whatsoever. But they had different packaging of flavoring that they're adding to it. But the most common is going to be an incense-type smell, but it can smell like just about anything.
And I'll get some more questions here if anybody has them. Something that I'm curious about, based on what you just said, sir, is where is, where is this being made, most likely? What is the location? I know I've heard a little bit about storage units and things like that.
It just, well, the actual chemicals that are coming across typically are coming from China itself. The substance that here, again, is going to be diluted with typically acetone to turn into a liquid form. It's something that can be sprayed or put into a container, mixed in with the plant material. But it's not like what a pharmaceutical, a person who makes pharmaceuticals in a controlled laboratory environment, that it's in a, in a storage facility, in an apartment, in an old abandoned vehicle, I mean, abandoned building. It doesn't matter. It takes, it's just dry material, wet material, mix it up, let it dry and package it, and that's all it is.
Glenn, would you say like a meth lab, something like that?
It is similar to like a meth lab. It's very, very, can be very, very mobile. There's not a lot of smell to it as far as the manufacturer go, other than the incense smells that they're going to add to it and then the acetone smell. But otherwise, it's very small, nothing clean about it. It can be done anywhere.
That's the first thing I was thinking of, too, Sheriff Snyder, was a meth lab. Yes, ma'am, you had a question?
I was just wondering, along with the properties that we know are damaging, when they add the flavoring or like the perfume, you know, what effect that has on their lungs, let alone their, you know, who knows what they're putting in this stuff to make it smell good? And I just wondered if you've seen possible people with breathing issues or?
It depends on the person using the product and actually the concentrations of everything. And if they've used, you know, if they've smoked cigarettes as a baseline, yeah, all of that plays in there. So again, there's enough of unknown. This is just more added unknown that, and again, it's just, it's symptomatic supportive therapy. It's maybe having to give somebody an anti-anxiolytic, you know, just trying to give them something to calm them down a little bit. What really bothers me is the seizure factor, of course, the addictive factor, that's a potential, the heart rate factor, the blood pressure factor we talked about. But any combination of the above, I don't want anybody to have.
Good question. Another one?
A question I have is for law enforcement. Have you guys tried the avenue of like getting OSHA involved? If these are chemicals, if it's a hazard, don't the business have to follow OSHA guidelines as far as hazard communication, you know, stuff like that?
The chemicals themselves typically, again, the substances being made overseas in China. So the controlled band of chemicals are all going to be over there. It's the finished product that just needs to be added with the acetone is done here. So the actual chemical process is not in this country, so that makes it very difficult.
And does the FDA get involved in this at all? Like, do they have to disclose what's on these packages? I guess I haven't seen ingredients.
I think that's the problem we ran into because it's not for human consumption. It doesn't fall under the FDA. Correct, Glenn?
Right. And that's where you see, they almost label it not for human consumption, so they're trying to get away or get around the FDA.
Sure. Any more questions? I certainly want to get to, we've got plenty of time here, so want to get to as many questions as we can. Yes, ma'am?
I know you guys say it's like teenagers that are doing this, but the people that are selling this, would there be a stiffer limit for like an eight, nine, 10-year-old coming in and buying this stuff? I work in retail. We have eight, nine, 10-year-olds come in and buy stuff by themselves all the time. If a young child like that came in and bought this stuff and they sold it to them, would there be a stiffer penalty for them?
There are enhanced penalties for delivering a controlled substance to anyone under the age of 18. So the answer would be yes.
You bring up interesting points. Very good question. In Michigan, they did a study, and I have some of my information that I want to give kudos to a senior Millican nursing student that we had rotating here through St. Mary's that did a whole research project on the bath salts piece. But there was a study in Michigan and the people that were abusing the bath salts piece were anywhere from the ages of 20 to 55. It was equal predominance, men or women, not one or the other more likely used it. But it's not just, I mean, I understand we're concerned about our students and our young people, but it's also up to the age of 55, they were noticing that people were using this.
Dr. Granzati, are there different effects on younger people than older people?
There definitely can be. Again, depending on the patient and what they use in conjunction and the unknown. If you have, for instance, if you're a 50-year-old and you have a heart problem already, guess what? This is not going to help that heart problem.
You sure wouldn't think so. Any more questions? Town hall forum, definitely want to answer anything we got. Yes, ma'am?
Will you put in the paper what gas stations, convenience stores, et cetera, are selling those?
Yeah, are you guys able to tell, you know, basically call these businesses out?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, to be perfectly honest with you, because we consider it very much an issue that's dealing with health and enforcement. I think once we get to the point to where we get all of them identified, we've made contact with each one of them specifically, ask them for some type of response from them, I think then the next step would be to call them out.
No time like the present. Are you prepared to do that?
I think we are, but we're doing some other things that we're just looking at to try to make sure that we got everything in proper order before we approach that aspect of it.
But you can easily go to these stores and see them up on their counter or in some places even put it on their marquee, so it's easy to identify who those places are.
Ma'am, there was a couple of cases I know specifically where school officials have went to them, asked them to stop and they failed to do so.
Because they didn't have to or why did they do that?
Basically, they chose, they took the information and they chose to continue so.
I want to go refer a question, Mr. Jay Scott. I used your name incorrectly earlier. I apologize for that. Just meeting everybody for the first time today. What should happen to raise this awareness nationally and locally? What do we need, what do we need to do?
I think we need to do more of this. A lot of people, I'd never heard of this before it became illegal, which is less than a year ago. So a lot of people don't know about it. I think we have to have the public awareness, not only for the parents, but for everybody else in the public, the people that are going to be patronizing these stores. Everybody's going to know about it and there are a lot of people out there that don't know about it. So I think that's the first thing we need to do.
And of course, and this is open for everybody. Anybody wants to chime in on what we should do now, kind of an action plan here. This is the age of information. Google's a powerful thing, you know, Google it, you know, take a look at what it looks like. That's very easy to do, correct?
Definitely, just get on a search engine and type in synthetic marijuana or synthetic cocaine and you'll get a lot of information. You'll also get a lot of news, news articles about people who have had rapid heart rates similar to having a heart attack, any kind of story about, you know, people dying, things like that. There's a lot of news articles referenced to this.
Are there any local or national programs, organizations that have been established for this or is it just too new for people to get that involved or they can join some kind of an organization to try to stop things? Is anybody aware of anything like that?
I'm not aware of any of them.
Probably will be. I mean, we have the, you know, anti-drug groups out there and I mean, I just haven't heard much about this aspect of it. Maybe they're going to start taking those things on as it becomes more widespread and more knowledge is known about it, is, you know, does that seem...
There are a lot more towns up near Chicago that have already started ordinances. We had a drug summit in Springfield that has, Ken Hatcher talked about earlier, with Lisa Madigan, there was a mother whose son used K2 for the first time and actually was driving home at a high rate of speed and ended up dying in that car accident. She's told many different stories on that day at that drug summit. And one of the eye-opening stories that she told was she goes around the state to give her message about her son and these products. And she talked about how one girl called her up on the phone and told her that she was with a group of friends smoking synthetic cannabis. And during that time, she basically went into like a coma state where she couldn't move, but she could hear everything that was going around her in the room. And she heard her friends panicking over the fact that her friend was not moving. And they actually were planning, they didn't want to get in trouble, they actually were planning how to get rid of her body and talking about how they were going to throw it into the river. And she could hear all this going on, but she couldn't do anything because she couldn't move because of smoking this.
It's definitely a scary thing and what it does to the body, as Dr. Granzati alluded to, it's unbelievable. So we've got a few more minutes of the live broadcast. Definitely want to make sure we've answered all the questions that are out there. I see a couple more. Definitely have a few more minutes and we're just scratching the surface on this, folks. This is something you're going to hear a lot more about.